Good evening. This is the June 21st, 2018 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. We're meeting in Town Council Chambers. It's now 7:00 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And will the commission members please introduce themselves, starting on my right?
Ryan Johnson, alternate.
Jonathan Formicella, alternate.
Leanna Brozzi, Commissioner.
William Porter, Chairman.
Paul Lisi, Secretary.
Michael Riley, Vice Chair.
Will Agresta, Planner.
Scott Schlosser, Land Use Group Director in town here.
Rebecca Williams, Organizer.
Alright, so... Yeah, Seaton. Bruno's not here, who would...
Jonathan is next.
Except when we get later on...
Right.
We'll go back to Ryan. Go back to Ryan. Alright, so Jonathan, you're seated until we get to the...
Deliberation.
Deliberation on...
What applications?
Fan Hill or Pepper Street?
Pepper Street and Cambridge Drive. Could be Cambridge Drive.
So Ryan, you'll be seated for those deliberations. Any organizational or administrative matters? Nope? Alright. Item number four, general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on an issue that's not related to a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on. General appointments, we have none. Moving on to public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening. Read the instructions for a public hearing. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recording of the proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and to speak into it loudly and clearly in order that everyone in the room can hear and to capture what is being said. Individuals speaking from their seats will not be heard and will not be recognized to speak. Rules and procedures of the hearing. Order of the hearing of an application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or representatives will present the application and will answer commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. The floor will be opened to general comments or questions. The floor will be open to the applicant who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comments shall be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the Chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the Chair, who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between speakers and audience. The commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but ask that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotion such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote or demonstration by a show of hands, standing by the audience for similar action, will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel the need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All speakers, when recognized, must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The Chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding, much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. Alright, the first up, we have S U B 2018-02. File number 1264C, 36 Timothy Hill Road, Industrial District 2. Public notice. In accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 8-70, a public hearing will be held in the Town Council Chambers, 7th and Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, June 21st, 2018, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter concerning the following. S U B 2018-02, file number 1264C, 36 Timothy Hill Road, Industrial District 2. Application of New England Materials LLC and Kimball Group LLC. Applicant in honor for a five lot industrial re-subdivision and construction of 1,650 linear feet of dedicated public street. Said application is identical to a previously approved but expired re-subdivision application. Alright, Will, we have a list of exhibits.
Yes. Exhibit 1, subdivision/re-subdivision application. Exhibit 2, narrative of proposed development. Exhibit 3, declaration of access easement and maintenance agreement draft. Exhibit 4, a butter's list. Exhibit 5, bond estimate form. Exhibit 6, applicant engineering report. Exhibit 7, plan set drawings. Exhibit 8, watershed and aquifer project verification forms. Exhibit 9, Department of Public Health notification with certified mail receipt. Exhibit 10, aquarium notification with certified mail receipt. Exhibit 11, ART building department comments. Exhibit 12, ART paramarshall comments. Exhibit 13, certified of butter notices of the... Notice of the hearing. Exhibit 14, ART town engineer comments. And exhibit 15, ART planner comments. That's all the exhibits. Before you move on, I just want to remind the commission, if you recall, a couple months back, staff presented you with a revised processing system whereby, in the past, what you were used to, we had taken advantage of most of the 65 days up to the hearing to do staff reviews with the applicant, go back and forth, have an exchange of comments and revisions to the plans. With the revised process, and this is the first meeting, all these hearings are under the new process, you're seeing out the staff comments tonight with... Well, you got them in your mail last week, but the comments you see are... You're seeing them for the first time, and the applicant got them back when you got them, but there has been no back and forth. So there's been no dis... You know, back and forth with the applicant and the staff. As you recall, the purpose of the revision of the process was to get things to you sooner and with the anticipation that if there were things to be worked out and things to still be looked at and still substantive issues, that it would carry over... The hearing would carry over to another time. Again, because it was not that back and forth with the staff beforehand, other than make pre-app. But that's not the same thing as what we did in the past. So that's where we are with it.
Okay, thank you. And for the applicant.
Good evening. Members of the commission, for the record, my name's Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering Offices located here at 501 Main Street in Monroe. Here tonight to talk about an application for a five lot subdivision, what's for 36 Timothy Hill Road, which is considered Section 6 of the Pepper Street Business Park. This application is a little unique, as has been identified in both the comments from the town engineer and the town planner, as this project has been fully approved previously by the commission, however that subdivision expired. We were actually able to submit the final stamped and signed plans that were stamped and signed by both the Wetlands Commission and the Planning and Zoning Chair, in addition to all of engineering reports, which were reviewed and accepted previously, and all of our legal instruments related to easements and such that were established as part of our initial applications. Just to orient everyone, up on the screen, this is an aerial of the town of Monroe. Pepper Street Business Park is located along the north end of Pepper Street, Route 25. Pepper Street is a loop in this location. The Pepper Street Business Park has been approved several times over several years, starting back in 2002 in several phases. We're here tonight to talk about Section 6, which is essentially the extension of Independence Drive in connection to 36 Timi... Or, excuse me, in connection to Timothy Hill Road here, proposing the construction of 1,650 linear feet of road which will connect, as I said, Independence to Timothy Hill. Timothy Hill was actually recently improved by the town of Monroe as part of a municipal project. I believe that was repaved and some drainage improvements were completed, actually, in anticipation of this project ultimately coming forward. So, the application... The application before you was actually approved in 2014 and then subsequently in September of 2016. After the last approval, there's a... It was approved both by Wetlands and Planning and Zoning. The Wetlands permit for this application is still current and active, so all work associated with this from a Wetlands standpoint are currently permitted by the Wetlands Commission, and that was attached to Scott's comments. After the approval in 2016, the developer was actually contemplating modifying the layout of the subdivision, in which we made another application, and then that application didn't ultimately... Was seen to the end, which resulted in the expiration of this application. So we're simply requesting that the commission re-approve something that was previously approved in the same condition as it was previously approved. So just to run through it very quickly, the site's located 36 Timothy Hill Road, and you can see all these plans actually have the stamp and signature from both the Wetlands Commission and Planning and Zoning. So the existing site totals approximately 44 acres, proposing to subdivide the property into five lots ranging from 3 to approximately 17 acres. Here's an overall road plan showing the proposed roadway. The roadway includes two wetland crossings, which are accomplished via a arch bridge and a oblique, open bottom, concrete box culvert. Both of these crossings were previously approved by Wetlands and Planning and Zoning. You can see we have provided stormwater management for the project in accordance with the 2004 Water Quality Manual, as provided by the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. We've been able to attenuate and control peak runoff and provide water quality improvements through a series of detention basins, one at this crossing location here, and a second in this location here, and a third along the eastern edge of the proposed roadway, just adjacent to the intersection with Timothy Hill Road. Our Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan has been designed in accordance with the 2002 Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Manual, as provided by DEEP. It includes a series of catch bas... Or, silt sacks and catch basins, silt fence with hay bale backing in certain locations, sediment traps actually designed and established to ensure they can... They're sized accordingly, et cetera. Our utilities, we're proposing all underground utilities for the length of the roadway. Public utilities exist in Independence Drive, which will be extended as part of this project. So underground electric, telephone, cable, extending the water main in the proposed roadway, and gas as well, which is currently located in Independence Drive. So all those utilities will be extended underground throughout the... Within the right of way of the proposed roadway and terminate in Independence... Or, excuse me, Timothy Hill Road here. As part of this application and previous approvals, Timothy Hill Road is actually going to be renamed Independence Drive, so it would be connected all the way from its intersection of Enterprise Drive in the business park and extend all the way to Fan Hill Road. Our landscape plan provided has extensive plantings focused primarily in the water quality basins and really focusing on kind of the entrances as you enter through the park. What was proposed as part of... Proposed and approved as part of the previous application was a waiver for the street trees as each... Based on that, as each individual lot is developed, each lot application will include a robust planting plan in accordance with the landscape requirements for any site plan application, which would be subject to review and approval by this commission. So we didn't want to propose street trees, which may end up becoming impacted in the future by individual lot development, and that waiver was previously granted. Additionally, we had requested a waiver to not require sidewalks through the... For the proposed roadway, as there are no other sidewalks currently available in the industrial park along Independence or Timothy Hill, and we didn't want to just create a section of sidewalk. We've provided extensive design drawings for the proposed roadway itself, sections demonstrating that it complies with all the requirements of both the zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations. We've provided extensive sections throughout the... Throughout the whole proposed roadway area. We've established site distance for all of the potential driveway locations for the future development of these properties and provided a potential development plan. All of this area was tested with the local health department, and that report is in... It was in the file as part of the previous approval, and we have provided, as I stated, a potential development plan as part of the previous approvals. We've demonstrated site distance for all the driveways. We've established easement locations for those site distances to ensure that they could be protected in the future. We have extensive details for the proposed... For the proposed development, whether it be the bridge crossings, the outfalls for the water quality basins, et cetera. So we're essentially requesting that the commission approve the application, which is identical to an application which has been previously approved by this commission. There's been no changes to the... There's no substantive changes to the zoning regulations which affect this application in any way. We're requesting essentially the same conditions associated with the previous approval be applied to this project. One of those conditions had to do with the phasing of the bonding for the project. We would request the similar language be included in this approval. I think both comments from town staff with the town engineer and the town planner have indicated that, based on their review, it is consistent, and they didn't have any other substantive comments in regards to the proposed subdivision application, any of their design calculations, or anything of those has been provided. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Alright. Start down at the end, no question.
You're still looking for, though, the waiver of the street trees and the sidewalks, right?
That's correct, yes. This... Yes.
That's it.
I would just have a question actually for Scott, if there was any... Since the last approval, if there was any engineering standards, either from the town or from the state, you know, regarding the roadway that would have been updated over the last couple of years?
Not that I'm... Not that I can think of.
Yeah. The most recent approval was in September of 2016, so it's relatively recent, and I'm not aware of any...
And it's forest stuff, but you have stormwater quality and stormwater retention, so...
Right. We incorporate all those things into our approval. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Michael, you already started this project.
Yes, the project started, and then, as I stated, we had made another application for a different roadway configuration to accommodate different potential tenants for those lots. Those applications were ultimately not completed, so while that was in process, all the work stopped, essentially dormant, as we were trying to perfect those new applications. Since those weren't ever completed, we simply want to re-secure this approval and proceed with as it was previously approved.
Was there any staff comments? Yeah. There are staff comments, too, being your... That you got in the mail.
Alright, go ahead, I'll work for you. Well, why don't you run through your comments?
Okay. So my comments. Confirm the waivers, obviously. I had essentially eight comments, or not eight, five, one, two, three, four, six comments. So the accuracy of your plan monument... The plan monument should be confirmed by the town engineer. I suggest that there be notation, the added to the plan detailing the applicant's responsibility for new changes to street signs with the sections that are referenced in the subdivision code. That wasn't something that I recalled as was part of the previous plans. The plans do show a bunch of stone walls on the property that are going to be removed, and there is some... Some locations that are somewhat definitive as to where they would be relocated, but it's kind of more general, and it seems like it's a lot less than the walls that are coming out, and I wanted... I suggest that be a little bit more specific, and most of the reconstruction work in some of the areas of the storm basins, which isn't bad, but if some could be... And some, I think, were along the road, which would be better. So I suggest that we have a little bit more clarity so that we know when we go to inspect, we know what it is we're expecting to be back... Put back. And then there's some notes that this need for housekeeping need to be updated with dates and some stuff that are based on... Because obviously, these are the old plans, so we've got to change some of the reference to the permanent approvals and stuff. There were draft legal instruments provided. I don't... I didn't do a thorough review of them. I don't know if they're any different than where they were last time. There were a few things in the previous conditions of approval that need to be done, so that should be confirmed, that those have been taken care of. And then obviously, we need to set a new bond, and whether that gets transferred or we get a new one, then we lease the other one. It doesn't really matter, but that has to be... That amount should be set as part of any project. So those are my comments that should be addressed.
Would you like to address any of those points right now?
I'd be happy to, yeah. The monumentation as part for a portion of the subdivision plan, those were exhaustively reviewed with the town engineer during the past application. I believe we've established identification for monuments, pins, et cetera, in accordance with the town requirements, not only on the road itself, but also additional monumentation for the existing lots towards the north and the south, which don't currently exist. And those are all shown on the subdivision plan.
Yeah, and also pins for the easements.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct. Those were all shown and established on the record subdivision map. So you can see monument to be set and include benchmark information on the final ASBIL, monuments to be set, monuments to be set, et cetera.
So Scott, you're good with the monuments and the pins?
Yeah, those are standard requirements of all subdivisions.
So you're okay with what's on the plan?
I didn't do an exhaustive review of the plan, and he's saying that...
We did before, though.
It's the existing...
We went through this thoroughly when it was approved.
Yeah, and he's testifying that it's the exact plan and there's no changes. We have standard requirements that street monumentations required along the street line at all, point... Angle points and points of curvature, and that all the property corners have to be staked with iron pins as well.
Mr. Solely, you're testifying that you're going to meet all the town's requirements with pins and monuments?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Next.
The new changes to the street signs and required funding thereof, I don't think... We didn't talk about this before. Obviously, there's currently a street sign for Independence Drive at the intersection with Enterprise Drive. I don't know if... Well, I'm not sure if you're referring to, like, changing the sign on Timothy Hill?
I guess we're going to need a new one.
On Fan Hill?
Yeah, I guess we're going to need a new one there.
I don't think the applicant would have an issue with providing another Independence Drive street sign. I don't know if he can install that?
Yeah, I think the way it works is that the public works does it, but somehow you could be for it.
Applicant would be happy to agree to that as a condition.
Okay.
The location of the stone walls, we did go through this exhaustively as part of the last hearings, and what we did is we did actually go out and establish, you know, where the stone walls were existing, where we're proposing those stone walls as part of this. We're primarily trying to focus those stone walls in and around the proposed detention basins, and all that information is shown. You can see there's a stone wall delineations through here. It says approximately the location of relocated stone wall along this property line in between these two bridges, in between these two bridges on this side, and we did essentially match the limits of wall stones which are currently available. What had happened on this site, as in many, is a lot of the area that were identified as stone walls, there really isn't much of a stone wall there, other than maybe one or two courses of blocks. And I... The commission may recall, we had exhaustive discussions about what constitutes a stone wall, whether it's one course or multiple courses, but we did establish comparable lengths of actual stone walls and using the materials that are available to us on the site. So we do believe and we do feel that we did provide that detail, and it is shown on the plans, to satisfy that comment. We can certainly modify any plan notes that are needed to reflect the current date of the application. The draft legal instruments, those were actually the fully agreed upon instruments, so we... Because that was actually required as part of the conditions of approval for the previous one, and we did have a...
How did you finalize those things?
Well, we did, because we wouldn't have been able to have a pre-construction meeting if they weren't, and we did have a pre-construction meeting for the application.
Then why weren't they recorded?
Because the... As I mentioned before with the...
To add the plot, right?
Right. So the... And to your next point regarding the bonds, the previous approvals were granted with a site stabilization/restoration bond, which could be posted immediately upon or after approval, which would allow the applicant, give him 270 days to perform some work prior to filing the formal subdivision plan on the land records. So that is why the instruments weren't recorded, because they were going to be tied to the final filing of the actual record map as well. So we would request that those same bonds amounts that were previously worked through with staff and established as part of the previous approvals, we'd like to maintain those same amounts. Those bonds are actually still posted with the town, those site stabilization/restoration bonds, those are still in the town's coffers, so those still exist on... For the project.
I'm fine with that. I just think Scott's going to have to confirm that the amount is still valid today.
Sure.
I know it's not that long ago, but...
Yep. I think that was the...
That's it.
Those are Will's comments.
I do have something I wanted to indicate, just to get Kevin's concurrence on, and that is, the only thing that has happened out here that is a little bit unique is that the previous approval was, as he said, we had the pre-construction meeting, and they moved forward with construction. As part of the application before the Wetlands Commission for the revised subdivision, there was some questioning about the limits and extent of disturbances that are actually out there, and they requested an ASBIL drawing, they never got it. So I myself don't know what those limits are. I'm not all that concerned about it at the moment, especially if this gets reinstated. They have their approval. They have to post the performance bond portion of their bonding before they can file the subdivision map on the land records and move forward, and I just wanted to see if, Kevin, if you would agree that upon completion, when we get the ASBIL, that the ASBIL include denotation of verification of the limits of disturbance, and that what I will do is compare that limit of disturbance with the limit of disturbance that's been approved for the subdivision proper, the roadway improvements. And if it is anywhere beyond that, certainly if it's within regulated area, then that would have to go back to the Wetlands Commission. And if it's beyond the wetland area, that you would agree that you would at least address that with the commission to determine if there are even any actions needed as a result of that. There may or may not be. For instance, they could... They possibly could go beyond the road embankment disturbance, but there could be... In the meantime, there could be an approval on a site which overlaps that, and it makes it a moot issue.
So if there was any remedial limit of disturbance, they would have to take care of it?
Yeah, and the reason I'm bringing it up is because typically, the ASBIL doesn't really go to that extent, you know, and I think it should in this case, just because of that.
Couldn't you do that beforehand by setting out the limits of... The pole's limits of disturbance out in the field and put your silt fences, you know, somewhere in that area?
Well, it got a little...
Therefore, you don't get an encroachment outside those areas?
It got a little funky, because there were two different applications, and there was work going on, and when you are... And the stakeout, at least we're not privy to that level of detail.
Well, you make it a condition. You do that before you start shoveling through it.
Well, I mean, you can do that.
I mean, you still do what you're saying.
To me...
That's an ASBIL anyway.
To me, if the damage is done, it's done, and let them build... Let them build the road, and when we're done with that, then they'll have to remediate if it shows that they're beyond that. In the meantime, you know what we're looking for.
Yes.
And I would think that they would... If you're out there doing construction, that you would... It would be in your best interest...
Of course.
...to address it then.
Right.
Why are you out doing the construction instead of waiting, you know? So it's really in both our best interests, and it can be done that.
I concur with what you said, but my point is, it's more proactive and more preventative, because you're establishing the boundaries. Doesn't mean someone won't go past them, but then you deal with it, you know it, you know where the boundaries are. So I would do... In my opinion, I would do that.
So, Mr. Solely, in agreement that you will mark the limits of disturbance prior to any construction?
Well, so silt fence is out there, it's established. It was established as part of the previous approvals.
So you've done it already.
Yeah, and actually, during that, those previous applications, we actually did provide an ASBIL to the limit of disturbance, primarily focused between the two wetland crossings. We didn't extend further east from there, because it was a larger site, and we're trying to avoid having to go out and do that additional field work. I think in this instance, I agree with... We'd certainly be happy to agree with the condition about the ASBIL. I'd certainly be happy to even look to see how we can address any discrepancies during that 270-day process while we're in construction. during that 270-day process while we're in construction. I'd only request that you don't make it a requirement to address it before proceeding with construction here because part of the intent of the site stabilization restoration bond is to allow the developer to perform out so much of the work, as much of the work as possible. So he's not obligated to such a large performance bond that was established as part of the previous approvals.
Well, I mean, you could set your limits to the extent that you're working in there.
Right, and that's-
And the day before, two days before, you're not talking months before.
Yeah.
So if you're only gonna go first hundred, you know, first thousand feet or whatever, you do that and then you, as you move forward, you then set the other limits, that's all.
Yeah, no, again, we're happy to go out and establish the limited disturbance in the field. And we're happy to provide an additional ASBIL at the end. And I do think that we'd be, the applicant would be willing to deal with any discrepancies, you know, during that 270-day period, provided that he's still able to-
And remediate any encroachment.
Yes, yes. Provided that he's still able to continue to proceed with the construction of the road under that.
You know, and the encroachments that, you know, happen because they happen because of whatever, that's one thing. But if there's some field changes that require, then you're supposed to call us anyway.
Which we, which we, I like to think we try to do a good job at that. We could always do better.
I think the name-
I think we do more than most.
I think one of the issues was that because the second, I don't know if it's the second or the third, but the revised layout of the subdivision, what it did was it moved, it moved the road. Actually, from an engineering standpoint, it was better because it moved the road and smoothed down the curves and the things like that. But it had other issues from wetlands and, you know, it's a little bit of, so there were some good things happening and then other things that were maybe negative depending upon how you looked at it. But the access road to get in there, to do the bridges and to do some of the work, actually was shifted. It was shifted to the other side of the proposed road. And as a result, I don't know, but I was left with the impression that some of that access activity actually started to happen, even though they didn't have the full proof. I thought that the limit was a little bit more than it was intended to be. But again, I, you know-
That will be addressed.
It will be addressed, right.
Right.
So I, I mean, I find it acceptable.
Is there anything else?
That's all I had. I referenced the wetland approval, which is still in effect. So that still applies to this new reinstatement.
Okay. Mr. Soli, if you don't have anything else, let's see if anyone from the public wants to comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Come on down.
Pat O'Hara, 282 Shelton Road. I think I've sat through this at least once, maybe twice, three times, me. Please approve this thing. Get it done. This has come to you too many times and quite frankly, it's been a waste, all right? As far as the street trees are concerned, I agree. Don't put street trees in there because we got too many problems with street trees that end up tearing up transformers when they fall over in storms. They tear a pavement. So please approve this thing.
Just for the record, Mr. O'Hara, this has not come back to us three or four times because we wanted to review it.
Didn't say did.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone with general questions or comments? Mr. Soli?
You know, with that, if there's no other questions-
One second. Did we confirm that current well and there is a valid, still valid, right?
Yes.
Did you put that in there?
Yes, it's a mic.
Yes, Scott, so I-
Okay, thank you.
You know, no other questions? We know, again, we, to summarize, we've proposed the five-lot subdivision of 36 Timothy Hill Road. This has been previously approved by this commission and we respectfully request approval again and hopefully the last time.
Thank you. All right, Will, with our new process-
Well, I don't think this one we've identified anything unless, I'll leave that to you. Is there anything that we've talked about that needs to, if not, this can go to closing the hearing and then you can do a draft?
You know, we have thoroughly reviewed this application at multiple public hearings in the past. This application, as they said, has a current wetlands approval. It has a lapsed planning and zoning commission approval, but we approved this as it's shown already. The applicant is willing to make some further changes based on staff comments. So I don't think there's any, anything else we really need to do with this.
Yeah, no, I think these things are not of the substance that we need to revisit them with the commission. So, you know, if it's of your pleasure, I would suggest you could close this hearing and direct staff to prepare a draft resolution accordingly based on the discussion of the hearing.
Close the hearing?
Close.
Yes, yes. Here, I explore the wall.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll deliver you down this later, correct? All right, next up will be 160 Shelton Road. In accordance with Connecticut general statutes eight dash seven dash, eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the town hall council chamber, 7 Fan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, June 21st, 2018, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, concerning the following. SEP-2018-02, file number 1597A, 160 Shelton Road, Residential and Farming District 1. Special exception permit application for a change of use from existing office to proposed church affecting approximately half or approximately 3,600 square feet of an existing building. CBL Incorporated, James Bargas, president, property owner, San Trumpe Baptist Church, care of Santos. Montanez, applicant. Will, what do we have for?
Exhibit one, special exception permit application with attachments. Exhibit two, plan sheet set. Exhibit three, ART building official comments. Exhibit four, ART town engineer comments. Exhibit five, copy of building inspection stop work order. Exhibit six, notification to acquire and with certified mail receipts and green card. Exhibit seven, ART fire marshal comments. Exhibit eight, ART planner comments. Exhibit nine, butter certified mail receipts. And exhibit 10, a butter green cards and notice of hearing. That's all.
To the applicant?
One moment. Is it loads? Good evening, members of the commission. My name's David Bjorkland. I'm president of the firm of Spath Bjorkland Associates. We have offices here in Monroe and I'm a professional engineer registered in the state of Connecticut. On this application this evening, the, on 160 Shelton Road, I'm representing the proposed church and the Bargas family, who was the owners of the building. The little history on this building, this building is located in a residential zone.
Nothing's coming up on it?
No.
Try it again, maybe you got- Try taking it out. I think there's two there, aren't there?
Yeah, there's something else in the other-
It's the mouse.
Try the other side or maybe-
Oh.
All right, let's try this.
Kind of near you.
Hold on a second.
Do you have a fourth?
Yeah, I'm trying something else. Yeah, so either way, it's having trouble loading up. All right, wait a minute, give it a second.
Yeah, let it load.
Oh, did it do that?
Did it?
Kevin had his on the left side.
He did?
Yeah, he put it in this left side or-
Yeah, see, it was on the left.
There's something in this one.
Similar to what's up here.
All right, so if you want, you could take that out and put ours in, we might have.
I know it's there because it-
It doesn't like yours.
Yeah.
What's the jeopardy thing? This is weird, this is, yeah, no, there's something. I used it last night in other town.
You should just get a monitor stuck.
Yeah.
All right, I looked, it is at five o'clock, fired right on. Proceed the old-fashioned way.
We have what you gave us.
Yeah, well, this was updated, but this'll work for, this'll get us.
So just hit the arrow up the top. See this thing right up here?
I was trying to scroll. Okay, here we go. These are, what I have submitted, provided this evening, is 10 sets of plans that were revised in accordance with the staff review. But let me go back to, this is the building that I'm sure everyone is familiar with. This is the office building that is located right across the street from the Whitney Farms Golf Course. And the building originally served when Whitney Farms was a horse farm. This was a barn and had houses stored in it. Then it went on to have a career as a building where construction equipment was stored when Whitney Farms was a gravel mine across the street. And then it had some use during the construction of the Whitney Farms Golf Course. In the early 2000s, the Bargas family started to look for a use for the building. We had explored doing a shopping center in this area and we decided that that was not a good use. But we, nobody wanted to see the barn get torn down. It was a landmark on Route 110. And the general consensus amongst a lot of people, including the Planning and Zoning Commission, was that let's find something we can do with this landmark and make sure that it stays there rather than, it had been subdivided into a one-acre lot rather than just build a single-family home on it. So we went to the zoning board five. The ZBA granted us the right to utilize this, the building, as an office building. And it was utilized at that point in time by Bargas Construction as a construction office, one half of the building. The other half of the building, as you're looking at the site plan up here on the right-hand side, has, have numerous tenants in it over the years lately. It's been vacant for quite a while. So the, that brings us to this evening. And because this is in a residential zone, the church use is permitted. And what is proposed there is to utilize the, basically the right-hand side of the building as you're looking at it for a church. The other side of the building, as you can see here, the office building would remain as it is and the church would remain on the other side. The pastor of the church is here and he'll be talking about the utilization of the space as a church. But the church, because it is a residential zone, is a permitted use. The office component of this building is utilized very lightly these days. Bargas Construction basically works down county at this point in time. And the office is used for bookkeeping for the Whitney Farms Golf Course and for some other miscellaneous accounting. And in this day and age, most of that accounting is done at a remote site, not here. So this office is never occupied, although it is 3,000-plus square feet. It's never occupied by more than two people and there are, the two people are never there continuously, five days a week. They come and go as files are needed and as checks need to be cut. But it's, it no longer serves as a five-day-a-week, eight-hour-a-day office. So that is very compatible with the use of the church. The church is going to be utilized on Thursday evenings. It's going to be utilized on Sunday mornings. And with the fact that there's an existing parking lot there that can accommodate the church and the time that is utilized for the parking and the time that it's needed is different, it's a compatible use. With the exception of a landscaping plan and some recreating, an area in the parking lot, we're proposing to have handicapped parking spaces. We're not proposing any changes. The layout of the parking lot is as it exists today. There's parking on this side of the building, a drive in the front, and then there's parking over on this side of the building. This parking over here has really never been utilized. There is an existing pre-ex- There is an existing, pre-existing apartment behind the building and these two spaces here are for the tenant who was in the apartment. So what we have is, we have the infrastructure in place, it's already there, that can continue to serve the office and the church going forward in the future. So the other, only other area of the building that we're changing, and we did go to ARB on Tuesday night and got a favorable review from ARB. Well, okay, I was looking for the elevation. Okay. The, the changes that we're proposing in the building itself to accommodate the church is we're doing some modifications internally here. This is an existing vestibule. This is going to get constructed, so there's a door here that leads into the office space. This is going to be reconfigured and this is going to become the entry into the church itself. There's going to be some classroom space here. This is going to be the sanctuary. On the east side of the building, there currently, there was an overhead garage door and there is a man door here. The overhead garage door is removed and that's going to get replaced with a window. So those are the, that's the extent of the exterior modifications that we're doing to the building. There are some internal modifications, these are the proposed bathrooms that are going to be done. But essentially, outside of the building, we're not proposing to do, make any changes, as I said, except for landscaping. The, I'd like to now introduce Santos Montanez, who's the pastor of the church, and have him talk a little bit about the church, its origin and how it's going to work at this location.
Good evening to the commission. My name is Santos Montanez Jr., I'm the pastor of Sound the Trumpet Baptist Church. I'm formerly from Stanford about eight and a half years ago and moved to Monroe with my family, my wife and four kids. We actually have six, but two of them are out. And we're very involved in the community. My kids play all baseball and football and all those other things in it. And we started Sound the Trumpet about four years ago. Right now, it's a local Bible study involved with neighbors and things like that. And we want to, this opportunity came up for this church building. And, you know, it's idea for us, it's a great location. And we're looking to improve on the space now, the current space now, and beautify. And it's a great space for us to, to work with. We're looking to reach out to the community to help troubled teens with drugs. I ran a drug addictions ministry for about eight years in Stanford, a successful one that continues today. And so we want to reach, reach out young teens and families that are in crisis. And our goal is also, the top goal is the gospel of Jesus Christ. And then, and to reach out and help those families that are in need. And my wife, who just left, she had to go pick up the little one from practice. That was my wife and my daughter, so, you know, that's, that's basically it. And we really want to, you know, reach out again to, to, to help people.
Can you describe to the commission what the hours of operation for the church, extracurriculars?
This is working, I mentioned Thursday night, but it's Wednesday night. We meet at Wednesday nights right now from the hours of seven to eight o'clock. We're not a large group, some of which are here tonight. And then on Sunday mornings, we have Sunday school from nine forty-five to, it runs till about ten thirty. And we take about a half hour break and then from eleven to twelve is the main service. And that's, you know, Wednesdays and Sundays. And then on occasion, we might have a special meeting, which might run, you know, three or four nights in the week. And that's probably once or maybe twice a year where that will happen. And then, you know, we might, like for Christmas time, you know, might have a special service. Or the, like Easter or bigger, or bigger times of the religious days. But like I said, it's not, it doesn't run late, you know, runs to, you know, I'm, I'm not a long-winded preacher. So I got a family, I run a business, I'm a contractor also, that's how I make my living. So we try to get out, you know, pretty early and it doesn't go long. Any questions from anybody?
How many persons?
Right now, we have, if they're feeling good, we'll have about twenty. But we average on Sundays from fifteen to twenty, sometimes even as high as twenty-five. Special times, we can have thirty-five, forty. This past December, when we celebrated our fourth year, we had about forty-five. So, but Wednesday nights is a smaller crowd, Wednesdays probably. But we want to, we believe that if we get into this building, we want to obviously expand and have more room for preparing for more people. And we, and on the drawings, we have, we have a fellowship hall on there. When you first come in, we have a nursery, there's two handicap bathrooms, there's a teen room. You know, we want to, like I said, my big thing is I love teens and I want to help them and I have. And so I want to really prepare for that also to really, again, really reach out to the community and help in any which way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions that any of the commission members may have. And I, there are, I do have responses to the staff reviews. I apologize, normally I would have gotten these in sooner, but we missed Will's email when he came in. And we didn't see it until Monday afternoon, so.
So you want to run through them now?
Well, I, I'll make, we can do it, I'll do it one or two ways.
That might answer a lot of questions that would come up, so.
That would be fine. We haven't heard from ARB, so I would imagine we're going to be, this will be continued for, for two weeks. So either, yeah, I'll be glad to do it either way.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we run through the staff comments?
Before Dave does that, again, just for everyone's understanding, again, the new, as I explained earlier, the new process, I mean, Dave you apologized, but you did need to apologize because the way the new process works, you weren't expected to bring in new plans or, or, or have responses before tonight. The way the new process works is that you come, you talk about the comments and obviously we try to dispel, dispense with whatever we can, but, you know, if there are other issues, the intent of the new process is to come, to adjourn the meeting. You address them, we submit, and then we have another review and another session. So again, you didn't do anything that wasn't expected. So I don't know if you want me to go through my comments or have Dave go through it? Want me to go through mine?
Again, all right, why don't you go through yours and Dave can respond.
Okay. Just a little bit of the history, the, there was a, the variance that did give it to be an office. I tried outlining in my memo the things that were required pertinent to that variance give. Obviously, the church is a permitted use and it has its own aspects that we're looking at. But there were a couple of things that I highlighted from that previous variance that seemed to not, to have gotten done. There was specifically supposed to be some evergreens in the way back. The proposed landscaping plan only addresses the front part of the property. So there's sort of a longstanding issue with the office give for the property, so that's sort of an outstanding issue. Obviously, when it was an office, the parking lots were supposed to be shut off at nine o'clock. And I don't think that's going to work with the church. It doesn't necessarily have to apply to the church because the church is a permitted use in the district. So we could get modification from that. With regards to specific comments, you know, I did have a comment about something in the application form was incomplete. You've talked a little bit about the activities of the church and I guess it's sort of a wait-and-see to some idea because as the church grows, obviously, the utilization will probably become a little bit more involved. I do think, I agree that there is a difference of use between the office and the church, no matter what the church's use ends up being. Because obviously, services is going to be the most attended. Everything else is going to be last. You do have the parking for the services, so parking's not really an issue. You should have, in the application, provided a narrative which addresses the different standards for the general standards of the special exception permit. So that's an outstanding issue. It may be in your stuff, I don't know. From a zoning point of view, again, I've identified under the code compliance the items that the code would require. And whether they're needed for this particular application or not, that could be a waiver, but that's something that you'd have to discuss with the commission. Obviously, it lacks topo on the plan. Doesn't demonstrate sightlines. I think the church use is a little different than the small-scale office that this property was. Maybe the sightlines are fine, I don't know that from the information that was provided. There should be a zoning compliance table. Setbacks should be shown. This is, you know, pretty ministerial stuff that can be taken care of. With regards to the floor plan, the record really should be complete of the entire building so that we have a record of today, what's in there. That's something that really helps a zoning enforcement officer in now and going forward. We did notice a discrepancy, I think, in your plan, a very small one with regards to that vestibule and that square footage, you know, it's not going to change the world, but it should be consistent with what the plan is saying in the square footage is. You went to ARB, we haven't gotten a written report from ARB. I do understand it went well, but again, we don't have that specifically from them. Parking, again, you should note some certain aspects of the parking. We're making some suggestions for some of the areas that are hatched that should be recaptured, in our opinion, to be landscaped because they could be used as parking, which they shouldn't be because they don't meet the dimensional standards. So those are noted. You need a parking space sign, the handicap sign needs added to the plan. Again, we talked about the floor plan reconcile. You were proposing thirty-three spaces, that's what's existing. Your analysis comes out to be thirty-six. I'm not sure if it will change when we move the vestibule around, but it's probably going to be the same. And you haven't proposed a mechanism for that difference in spaces. Assuming you're alluding to some kind of difference of demand. So that's something the commission can look at, but we have to know, I think three spaces may fit under that percentage, but we'd have to pick out this percentage and do the calculation. The bulk of the application is the new landscaping. If anyone's driven by there not too long ago, you'd see that the front was, the vegetation in the front was taken out and the stumps, when they were taken out, disturbed all the soil. A fair amount of the trees that were there, they were very big, some of them were dead, some of them were half-dead, I guess, or mostly dead. So I'm not sure we lost anything at the end that was, you know, worth keeping per se. But we did lose trees and the proposed planting plan that was, that we reviewed was relying on shrubs. And so we're really suggesting we should put back some trees along the street fines there. We had some other comments about different things with the landscaping that we would suggest be looked at. I don't know if you're proposing any irrigation. You're going to put in a fair amount of landscaping, you know, you may want to do some irrigation. If so, that should be on the plan. Lighting, it does show the location of the post-mounted lights. I'm not sure if the elevation showed any lights, but we don't really have a record of what's out there. If it's all staying the way it is, if there's any proposed changes to it. Same thing with signage. You should, you need to detail the signage on the site plan. Stormwater, obviously, you're not changing anything, so I'm not sure there would be necessary requirement for, for stormwater. That's something Scott can comment more about. The, I don't think we got anything from the health department in the record. The, I don't know what the condition of the septic system is. Obviously, it's been working as far as I know, but that was a, it is a small-scale office, part of it's been vacant for a long time. The calculation for the church, or the, excuse me, the office was based on two people and not really recognizing the size of the office. And I understand the current office may only be two people occasionally, but it's allowed to be an office and if they found a tenant that had, you know, fifteen people, you could put them in there. And that would change, obviously, the equation of how the septic would get used. So I'm not sure the calculation really meets the spirit of what that facility can accommodate. And that's something we should verify with the health department. And again, the usage of the septic was also made a distinction between the difference in demand. Again, that's something that the health department should confirm is adequate. And I didn't see anything on the plan, and I don't know if there is anything out there for, you know, dumpster or garbage removal. And that, there should probably be something, if not just, I don't know if it's just going to be the typical residential roll-off cans or if you need something more, or if there is something more out there. And if it is something more, it would need a, you know, appropriate storage location and screen thereof. So those are my comments.
So for my comments, the survey, just looking for T2 information, which is the topographic information. We got a boundary line survey, which just shows the dimensions of the structures on the property and the boundary line. Layout, handicap parking, just a suggestion or indicating that there should be accessible to the sanctuary, not just the one area that was indicated. Van parking space, that's usually, that's the first space that's required. I think there might be a typo on the seventeen, Dave, I'll confirm that maybe on the site.
Nick picked up on that. The plan's been modified.
But it is different from the regular space, so we'll confirm that. Limited extent of the paving, the application referenced proposed paving, but it's not shown on the plan. The grading, existing grading spot elevation contrary should be provided in order to verify ADA compliance with the handicap. We're finding many of the existing facilities that are out there don't have the right slope that's required by the ADA requirements. And I think you concur in your response, and I saw it. Traffic and safety, the crosshatch line-stripped island should be provided at the following locations. I listed a bunch of areas where typically there'd be islands. And I'm indicating that they could probably address it with crosshatch line striping. However, the following comment, drainage and utilities, just a reminder for the commission, is our current MS4 permit with the state of Connecticut. The guidelines are such that they require or they're urging the town to retroactively reduce pavement in pervious area by two percent on existing facilities. So what happens is when applicants come in for new facilities, they address stormwater quality and stormwater quantity. And those are two big items that your commission should be looking at. Many times, they're addressed by Illinois Water before it even gets to you. But those are items that are looked at for new development. So those developments address that requirement. However, the current MS4 permit that we hold as a town also requires that we reduce pavement on existing facilities. And you say, well, how can you do that? And I'm finding that in most cases, I'm seeing that most existing facilities don't have the islands that you require anyway. So a lot of times, if they put in a few islands where they're supposed to go- So a lot of times if they put in a few islands where they're supposed to go out in the sea of pavement, that typically they can reduce it by that percentage point. If they can't do that, there's other mechanical means. They can, they can provide stormwater quality control units, which range in anything from retrofitting an existing catch basin to providing a hydrodynamic separator. And then there are other methods of providing attenuation such as underground storage retention and things like that. But what I'm seeing is that in most cases, it looks like some of these older properties, these existing properties, they can address it pretty inexpensively by just complying with your requirements as far as putting in a few landscape islands because that gets rid of impervious area. So I'm suggesting that they do that and I can work with Dave to try to achieve that. Proximal location of water service, that should be no problem. Conversion, well, to the landscape, we just talked about that, the conversion of the crosshatch to the landscaped islands. And the location extent of storm drainage, I see that he addressed it in his response letter. It looks like we're just dealing with a simple catch basin on the property, but the plan really didn't say that. And I am suggesting at this point that the bonding is probably going to end up being just the minimal bond amount of twenty-five hundred. There should be a bond report, bond estimate provided that would indicate any limit of disturbance so that I can, you know, come up with a bond amount. But I think we're going to be talking about twenty-five hundred dollars. That's it.
Okay. So, Mr. Bjorklund, I think in light of the fact that there's a pretty extensive list of comments that need to be addressed, I don't know if you want to try to address any of them now or if you want to prepare something for us for the next meeting.
I, what I, what I would prefer, we're ninety, ninety-five percent of the way there on the comments. I think there's a couple of things that Scott, Will and I need to discuss as to how we're going to approach them. And I think we could do that between now and the next meeting and come back and basically hopefully have a clean slate.
Okay. And also I see in our file that there's a start-stop work order that's been issued on the property.
That's correct. The church got, church got a little ahead of themselves. Oh, it's been stopped since last, the first of the year.
Why don't we just see if any of the commissioners do have questions that maybe can be addressed at the same time?
Access to the parking lot is going to be, to the building is going to be in the back, is that what you said?
The access to the church is through the existing front door to the building. There is, there is going to be a door back here, which is required by fire and building. But access to the building is just what you see and have seen for years from Route 110 through that, there's, you know.
Okay, that's the front of the building.
Right. Yeah, the slide is on its side.
What you're not seeing in this picture is the white space to the bottom of the screen is more building. To the wall, I think.
Thank you, I get it.
John? I don't have any other questions on the goals presented by staff.
I just have a question about the parking. Are you, would you be able to accommodate more parking on this lot if you had to?
I haven't looked at it in that light, but probably a couple of spaces, but not many more. Right.
As a church grows, is it be able to handle if the church is growing?
I believe when I looked at this originally, there, there is a possibility to add more spaces on the, that's the west side of the building. Parking lot there is awful wide. Go back to the site plan. We've added, those spaces have been added there. Adding, the only place we'd be able to add, you know, more parking would be to reconfigure this.
I'm just saying, so you have room to do that if you had to do it. Down the road, I mean, right now, I understand that you should be able to handle that. I'm just worried about someone trying to park out.
Oh, I'd be worried about that too.
Right, well, I'm just saying.
If we know anybody who knows Route 110.
Right. And just, you know, that's the only issue I have. I don't, I just like, just wanted to help you be able to accommodate for that.
Is that it?
Yes.
I assume there's no fixed seating in the sanctuary? There's no intent to have fixed seating?
I'm sorry, sir?
Are you proposing fixed seating in the sanctuary or folding chairs?
We like to do the fixed seating, but obviously cost is a factor. But we are looking and we're working with a furniture person now for fixed seating, a moving sphere type of seating that gets passing to the concrete.
Well, the reason I ask is because I'm trying to determine how you calculated the parking. Because it states one space for five seats. And I'm not sure what that's based on.
We assumed that there, we did a sketch with folding chairs.
And so, what's, what's the area of the sanctuary roughly?
Well, that whole, the whole church side is thirty-four hundred square feet, so I would think it would be about half of that.
It's about twelve hundred square feet in the sanctuary.
I'm saying that there may be, I guess it's based on a hundred people, what you calculated the parking?
That's what we looked at.
I think in the meantime, we should check with the building department and the fire marshal as far as what the people capacity would be of the room and see if it's at a WAF or.
That's what I'm getting at, that there may actually be a lot more people that can be in that room.
Okay, we can look into that.
That was it.
Is there a tenant in the apartment?
Yes.
Does that have an implication on being a multiple use?
Well, you can have multiple, you can. I don't have any other questions.
It appears that from the nineteen ninety-one, was it, ZBA approval, that they required the landscape buffer along the back property line, which I guess was never put in. Is there any?
Well, at least, Jim Bargis, who was here, and I were discussing that. If you look, if you go and you look at the site immediately to our west, there is a single-family home. That buffer, obviously, and a fence was installed at some point in the past. So there is the buffer there coming, and we just don't remember. This project wasn't handled by Jim. He was off doing other things and his father did this. So we don't, we don't know if the buffer went in, that the neighbor to the rear has cleared right to the property line. And it flows very easily to our east. There's a storage garage. It's probably a five or six-bay garage and it's not, that's not a residential use. So, we don't know if it was installed. It definitely was installed, but we don't know what the timeframe was.
I don't have any other questions at this time. Staff have anything else?
No.
Why don't we just see if there's any questions or comments from the public? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Aren't you glad you stayed?
Yes, actually, I stayed just for the reverend. Patrick O'Hara, two eighty-two Shell Road. I saw the reverend the other night before I went to ARB. Seems like a nice guy. I guess I'm a neighbor. I live about a half mile down the road. So I could tell you that yes, the current use of the office is very infrequent. I share your concern about parking as the church gets bigger and gets into other activities. But from what I heard so far, parking meets the requirement. I heard the town planner saying something along those lines. As you get into the landscape, I think the trees in front, I thought one of them got blown out in the storm.
Two, two of them.
Yeah, they, they lost them in the storm and it was no great loss. However, it is a very pretty building. So as you do the landscape, whatever you get into for the landscape, it would be nice to be able to preserve the view of the building from the street as we're driving by. You folks just talked about landscape buffers. The property to the, to the south where it says, what, Combed Up? You should probably talk to your zoning enforcement officer. That property was an issue for many years. Construction vehicles, work was going on, block was all over the place. I heard from a neighbor once or twice about what was going on there and they may or may not have removed something that was, you know, previously done as, as required work. I mean, it was, it was a little bit of an issue. Other than that, I think a church in that area would be, would be nice. Hopefully they can get this approved with you guys. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Hara. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who wants to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone with any general questions or comments? Bjorklund, back to you.
I have nothing else to add to the presentation. We thank you for your time and we'll see what seems.
Continue this to our next meeting then, which is July fifth.
Yep.
July fifth. Okay, next up, ninety-six and one twelve Barn Hill Road. In accordance with Section eight dash seventy, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall Council Chamber, seven Pan Hill Road, Monmouth, Connecticut, on Thursday, June twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, at seven PM or sooner or after, concerning the following. S U D two thousand and eighteen dash oh one, file number one-two-six-three-C, ninety-six and one twelve Barn Hill Road, Residential and Farming District One. Resubdivision application proposing a two-lot resubdivision with no associated site owner. Irene and Dana Mackandow. And Lisa Payne, owners applicants. Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit one, subdivision, resubdivision application material. Exhibit two, resubdivision map. Exhibit three, letters of authorization, current owners and applicant. Exhibit four, according order of company, DPH certification. Exhibit five, adjacent municipality referral notice. Exhibit six, A R T engineer comments. Exhibit seven, A R T building official comments. Exhibit eight, zoning board of appeals, area variances approval. A R T comments and exhibit ten, planner, A R T comments and a receipt tonight. Exhibit eleven, which are the receipts and green cards of the public hearing.
And I will, just before we start, Amy Suchin, for the record, I will give you what will be twelve.
Okay, who are the applicant?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Amy Suchin. Seven attorney at Hurwood Sagrin-Sossberg &amp; Knuf. Here representing Lisa Payne, who is the applicant and also the owner of ninety-six Barn Hill Road. And we are here with the consent of our currently co-owners of one twelve Barn Hill Road, Irene and Dana Mackandow. So as I outlined in the narrative that was included in the application, we are here tonight because the, what is the Payne property known as ninety-six Barn Hill Road. A portion of that was actually sold to the Mackandows about eighteen or nineteen years ago as a separate parcel. The understanding between the parties at that time was that it was a separately subdivided property. And I outlined the background for that, having to go through any of the historical maps. But I think for your purposes and to keep this efficient, safe to say that as a result, what it was clearly some confusion on the part of all the parties and misunderstanding. This was not done as a legal subdivision. So we are here tonight to create the legal subdivision. As Mr. Agresta noted, we have no work proposed. This is simply to create a property line as the parties intended. At that point, there are some modifications that needed to happen because the property line that was conveyed to the Mackandows was actually slightly under the one-acre zone. So part of the variance applications were to meet the current requirements for the square and the coverage requirements based on what is currently on the Mackandow, what would be the Mackandow parcel. Those were the two variance requests. And then the property line as shown on the resubdivision map would therefore comply with not only the one acre, but the result of those two variances. So in fact, that's basically all we are asking for is the subdivision in order to create that line. What I submitted to Mr. Agresta just now was in response to his staff memo requesting that we either update the subdivision map or request the various waivers that he, additional waivers that he called out upon his review of the subdivision regulations. So with respect to his comments in items two and three of his, his comments, we've requested waivers for all of those except for three A. Mr. Lewis, Tracy Lewis, our surveyor, has updated the map to, the resubdivision map to show the adjoining property lines and owners across Barn Hill and Israel Hill. And then the other items that were called out in the town engineer's memo highlighted some issues with the wetlands. There are, there is a pond on the property. We have submitted the application earlier today, in fact, for the subdivision referral to wetlands. So we hope that will be taken up shortly. Understand we can't make, won't close and won't make a decision tonight because we need to await that, those comments. But Mr. Sapsline did in fact consult with the Wetlands Commission and we were able to avoid the need to flag all the wetlands and do a full delineation. Because there's no work proposed, the comment was requested that we add a note to the resubdivision plan that if there is any future work in the, or any work in the future, that that would, the wetlands delineation would be necessary as part of that plan for those, that permit application process that's consistent with the wetlands regulations and has been noted on our resubdivision map as note nine. And then with respect to the comments in his memo about the right-of-way and the street trees, I think the two issues that we have there is that the subdivision has in fact, as I noted at the beginning and outlined, this is a subdivision that has gone through several processes in the past. The request for widening the right-of-way has not been made, so we think it, we don't think that's necessary here. And in fact, depending on where you are, particularly on the Payne portion of the property along their house and garage, any type of widening of the right-of-way and conveyance to the town would actually exacerbate a non-conformity with respect to the front yard setback as far as the house and garage, with both of which are currently non-conforming. So we don't think that that's necessary. And then with respect to the locations of the, or street tree plantings, much the same way. When I read that regulation, the request is for street trees along a road that, along a road that the developer is intending to dedicate to the town. This is an existing town road and we're not intending to do anything else. As I said, no work. So we request that no street trees be required. With that, I think that's the extent of the comments that I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think otherwise, if there's any other staff comments, otherwise we'll just wait the comments from, from Wetlands for you to be able to close your hearing and make a decision.
You said this subdivision of properties was originally done about nineteen years ago?
It was nineteen ninety-nine, yeah.
Do you know if the two? Do you know if the two individual property owners have been receiving individual tax bills from the town of Monroe?
They have, they are separate assessor slots and I, including-
So, the town has recognized these as individual parcels for the last nineteen years?
Yes, they have.
Well, there was a deed filed on the land records.
Right, there was a deed filed on the land records. But, as you'll see in exhibit A and B to the narrative, I put copies of the assessor's cards in there because that was, in fact, one of the things that I was trying to figure out when we were first retained was how this happened and it's not quite clear. But those, they have separate tax cards.
Everyone will have an opportunity to ask any questions they have. But I, my recommendation to the commission would be to waive any of these requirements because this is something that, if the town made a mistake nineteen years ago, I think it's a lot to ask of the property owners now to go through all of this to establish what is basically already established. Brian, any questions you have? Yeah, no?
No questions.
No, I agree with you too, Bill.
I agree. Okay, so, a piece of the property was sold?
A portion of, so if you look at the, based on our seem, based on our sub, resubdivision map, the original property, and, and both of these homes actually probably date back to the turn of the first, you know, they're about nineteen hundred, predate that probably in the eighteen hundreds. So, both of those homes were there. The property has been historically owned by the Payne fam, by Lisa Payne's family and it was subdivided off over the years. And the understanding was that that was, the piece conveyed to the Mackandows had been subdivided, but clearly it is not.
Just in the zoning department, it's all, it's all been set and all the other problems of the town?
Yeah, it's, how this, right, so there are separate assessor's cards. There was frankly some confusion about what was on some of the maps. We had maps that depicted a line. Mr. Agresta went back to the land records and found the map that did not depict the line that we had seen.
That was, that was my line.
Correct.
That was.
Right, I'm sorry.
What brought all of this up?
The Mackandows came in to see, I believe, Mr. Agresta about doing some renovations and expansions on their house, at which time he discovered it was not a legally subdivided lot.
Okay, thank you.
What's the minimal things that have to be done to make this a legal subdivision?
Again, we didn't get a report from the health department. I mean, obviously that properties have been existing, with their respective systems. The rest, I don't think there were other, the ones that you were asking for, I didn't have any problem with.
Yeah, for the record, Tracy Lewis, licensed land surveyor, and it did the map. I did talk to the health department prior to any of the work that we did. And they had no problem with the, with the septic areas. They're, they're large, they're already, they're existing houses, they already have septics on them. And there was no issues with the health department. I agree, you probably should get something in writing from them, but, but just to ease your mind, there was no problems with the septic.
Thank you. With regards to some of the other items. Tracy, do you know where the closest water main is?
I do not. So, the house right before yours, which one is that?
Towards Nelson Burke.
Okay, so that's the one on the bottom of the map?
Yeah.
Okay.
The water stops right before our market.
Our market. So, the water stops at Barn Hill, right before the market?
So, it's at the property?
Yes.
So, you, you, we'd have to, I have to look at the court, I brought the zoning court, bring it outside, there she goes. If it's within five hundred feet, is there discretion to not do it? That's what we have to check on our end. I think there may be.
I think there is.
Wait, I think there is.
I mean, well-
Over there.
This curve, thank you. Top of the vision line, this one?
It's in here.
This might be early.
A thousand.
Thousand. Distance required for mandatory public water supply. Minimum requirement, the minimum distance for mandatory, okay, so it says minimum distance for mandatory public.
But, I would want to know what that regulation was nineteen years ago.
Oh, this is nineteen ninety-six in the book, so.
Ninety-six.
I mean, these are two existing homes that are already-
Yeah, I mean, that would be the only thing that I would go after is, yeah, the existing homes.
Right, there is, there is the- I was just saying-
I would recommend to the commission that that be waived.
One-eleven, a thousand, there is a waiver provision.
What number is it?
One-eleven dash one thousand, there is a waiver provision.
Oh, yeah. Okay, that's cool, so that gives us that. From a historic point of view, I don't know how this happened either, but if anything, my guess, it's more likely the deed was recorded, the assessor and the zoning department in ninety-nine didn't probably talk to each other and they just started assessing it. There are other lots, but they just probably got work formally subdivided. And I think it was the current property owner that did that, so it's kind of hard to understand why, you know, the subdivision wouldn't have been done, but whatever, it was done. So, this will cure it, will get everyone on the right track.
So, and I have a fact that we're still waiting for input from the wetlands department. I think we should hold this hearing open, but I don't think that there should be any other requirements from this department. Anyone disagree with that?
No.
Since we're gonna have to wait for the Wetlands, I will try to tap the health department and get something from them as well. So, we can close that door too.
Well, since this is a public hearing, I have to at least see if anyone from the public wants to provide input.
Absolutely.
Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? I guess there's nobody who would like to speak in opposition, any general questions or comments? Back to you, counselor.
I am, Tracy, is there anything else you need to do?
Yeah, I'm in.
We are, we are all set and we will be back here.
July fifth.
July fifth.
It's not gonna be July fifth.
What's that?
It's not gonna, July, it's not gonna happen anymore.
You won't have inland?
Well, Wetlands won't happen.
Right.
Can we start with that, when, when, when do you think it'll be?
It'll get, um, I'll get my calendar out. So, this was submitted today, so it's gonna get accepted after leaving next Wednesday. And scheduled for hearing, a me, excuse me, a meeting. So, what's today, that's the twenty-first. So, it gets accepted at the twenty-seventh and it'll be heard on July twenty-fifth. Because it's just a referral, my guess is that they're not gonna want a draft, they're just gonna tell me what to say and, and I'll, so they'll, they'll decide right on the twenty-fifth. So, that means that you guys would, would be getting it on August second.
All right, so, continue to August second?
Okay. Can you, can you attest to an extension and give me a copy of the writing?
I was just gonna say, to the extent that we're beyond the sixty-five days, I will consent to an extension on the record and we'll get you a letter to get us through the second.
Okay, thank you.
Are we all set?
We are.
August second. Thank you. Next up, item number four, site development plans, we have none. Moving on to deliberations and determinations. Item number five, time extensions, excuse me. S D P two thousand and seventeen dash oh-six, file number one-two-six-eight-fourteen Main Street. Dear Mr. Agresta, Mr. Porter, members of the commission, as applicant, I respectfully pass the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission for an extension of time to obtain final approval of site planning to complete improvements as follows. Thirty-day extension to file final plans and extend the time to complete improvements to August first, two thousand and eighteen. I have provided the town a bond and the proposed handicap ramp has been approved. State DOT has requested additional changes to the plans, which have been divided. We also have provided the DOT with a proposed easement, subordination agreement and certificate title. We are awaiting the state's approval. Once we receive approval from the state DOT, we will submit the site plan to obtain final approval. Thank you very much for your time, consideration and patience. Ronald Bellanotte Senior, so.
Quick little background?
Sure.
Okay, if you recall, this is the, the house just north of where Compound Solutions is on Main Street. It's a conversion, approval conversion to a, to a lawyer's office. In granting that approval, you, you also gave him allowance to use the premises while he pursued, this is beef, in the fall, while he pursued the DOT approval. You had an upset date of June first, that he was supposed to have everything completed. He hasn't done any of the work, obviously, because he hasn't got his DOT approval, so he hasn't been able to finalize the plans in order to do the work. So, he, and he needs two different approvals, because one, he's running out of time on filing the final plans and he needs, he needs to get sort of a retroactive approval from the June first date that you set for giving him the conditional access into the, into the facility. So, those are the two things he needs. I met with him not too long ago and his contract with regards to the handicap ramp, I think we've worked that out. It's just now getting that formalized on the plan. The DOT, he did get comments from the DOT. I think he did responses to DOT about a week ago and I don't know where he, you know, where they are in that process per se, but that's all, those two get working.
So, the delays are as a result of his?
Ah, he hasn't gone as fast as he could, but yeah, not. He's doing the best he can on, you know, for someone who doesn't do it for a-
Kind of feeling that the state's not that, not that easy?
Oh, the state, yeah, the state's not that easy, but I mean, it was, it's getting the other details. Been a lot of handholding. But he, he's, he's very conscientious and, you know, respective and when I ask him, he does respond, so.
He's, he's not asking for, he's asking for a two-month extension on his completion, so.
I mean, we do have a little bit of quandary because although the commission let him use it, he's not technically allowed to use it under the building department because the building department needs the DOT approval to upgrade the driveway to a commercial standard to allow the commercial use, because it went from residential to commercial. So, he's kind of on borrowed time with them too, but he understands that he's working with DOT, so he's been lenient.
Okay. So, he wants to-
Two extensions.
Just a thirty day on, on the plans?
Well, he thinks he's gonna get everything back from DOT and he even thinks on August, he's gonna have everything done. He thinks once he can go, he can go fast, I think he's a little optimistic.
Can we, can we box that?
Yeah, you can give him more. You can give whatever you want.
Why don't you give him sixty days on the plans and give him till September first to complete the improvements?
Okay.
Otherwise, he's gonna be coming back here.
Yeah, well, that's what I said, don't. He didn't want to be grieved.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move to grant the time extensions on S D P two thousand and seventeen dash oh-six, one-two-six, as we are drafting a sixty-day extension until, and the second to September first.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Call the roll?
Form Kelly, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Quarter, yes. Lacy, yes. Riley, yes.
Next up. File one oh nine S, or one oh nine S, file one-four-seven-seven-A, one fifty-four, one sixty-four, Enterprise Drive. Dear Chairman, on behalf of Bruce Moore Senior, I am writing to request a five-year extension of the planning and zoning special exception permit for one fifty-four, one sixty-four, Enterprise Drive, planning and zoning application number one dash zero-nine dash S, file number one-four-seven-seven-A, and S E P two thousand and sixteen dash twelve, file number one-five-eight-two-A. As you know, work is nearly complete on the one fifty-four enterprise portion of the project. Work is yet to begin on the one sixty-five enterprise portion. The applicant requests this extension to complete dependent approved work under both the original and current planning and zoning approval. The original decision was granted on July ninth, two thousand and nine, and filed on the Town of Monroe Land Records in volume sixteen oh five, pages two-seventy-six or two-eighty, on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and nine. Current decision was granted on April sixth, two thousand and seventeen, and filed on the Town of Monroe Land Records in volume one-nine-seven-four, pages twenty-two through thirty-five, on September seventh, two thousand and seventeen. I have attached copies of, of the each recorded special exception permit for your review. Please let me know if there's anything I need to provide to help process this request. Thank you, solely engineering.
This is Eastern Land Management, they took over the two properties of Nagy Brothers in the Business Park. If you recall, you gave them an approval to modify the old two thousand and nine approval that never got really built. So, since it was, that, that also had the luxury of the extension under state statutes for an additional four years, so they've used the first five years, they're coming up on the four years and there's another up to five years that you can grant for extension for the life of that permit. They are very close with finishing the, the first building on, on the one fifty-four parcel. They'll probably have most of that done in the next month or so. They obviously haven't done anything with the other parcel, because they don't have a tenant or whatever, so. So, they need it for two reasons, they needed, one, to finish the building that they're working on and obviously to keep the vacant lot alive.
I, as you know, we have held back on granting five-year extensions on certain properties in the industrial park where we have ongoing violations on the property. We've granted them like a year. But I asked the Z E O to go out and take a look at the property. As Will said, they're almost done with the first lot. The second lot, Joe said it's clean, they do have a couple of vehicles parked on it, but there's no piles of trash or garbage or rubbish or materials stored on it or anything. So, it, it is a relatively clean site, they, they don't seem to be using it for any unapproved purpose. So, seeing that's the case, I, I, you know, I have no objection to a five-year extension.
All right, so I'm motion to grant the five-year time extension to one dash oh-nine-S of what's in seven seventeen?
Second.
Do we need to extend the S E P also?
Well, that's what you're extending.
Yeah.
For extending the S E P approval. This is a statutory extension, so.
We have two S E Ps listed here.
Well, you're, oh, it's, it's both, yeah, they're both the-
Okay, so Mike, if you wouldn't mind amending that to include both S E Ps?
And all amendments there too.
Where's the other?
So, say the original S E P from two thousand and nine, all amendments there too.
Okay, original S E P and all amendments there too.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? Call the roll?
Form Kelly, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Quarter, yes. E C S, land, yes.
Okay. Do we want to deliberate on, start deliberation on any of the other? We're closed.
We didn't get there yet, you wanna get to the minutes and then you get to the, or?
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Oh yeah, we do have others, so. All right, bond releases reductions, we have none, permit amendment modifications, none meeting minutes. President, order, Porter, O'Reilly, Lacy, Ambrose, and McKellie, so you're still seated, John. All right.
Mahaney isn't here.
Well, first, let's get a motion.
Move to accept the June seventh, two thousand eighteen minutes as drafted.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any corrections or comments?
Page five, on the bottom. Mahaney was abstaining, it was, I'm abstaining, so Mahaney wasn't here.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
No, Mahaney was absent.
He was absent, so he did not vote.
He was part of the seated persons for that program.
Oh, so he just absent?
Because we started the deliberation at the previous meeting, we, we couldn't seat somebody in his place, so he is.
And on that, and on that issue, I did happen to meet with Vin Moreno this week, and I asked him about that, and he confirmed that that's a good practice.
He was absent.
Stay seated.
Well, because we started the deliberation when he was here.
Okay.
So when we continued the deliberation, it wouldn't be appropriate to seat somebody in his place. Okay, anything else? Hearing nothing, I call the roll.
Form McKellie, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes. E C S, O'Reilly, yes.
Okay, pending application deliberations. Okay, I guess I was jumping ahead, sorry.
Go your way.
First up, SEP two thousand eighteen dash oh one, file number one five nine six eight, forty five Pepper Street, Industrial District One. We have a draft approval. Just to refresh the commission's memory, this is an SEP application where the applicant came in asking for an SEP and proposed to do absolutely nothing on the site. Through discussion and deliberation, the commission had a general consensus that if an approval were to be granted, it would be conditioned on a number of items which are spelled out in the draft here. Some of the items being off street parking areas would be paved, any storage areas, driveways would be paved. Driveway would be widened to twenty four feet, improve the turning radius on the driveway, stop bar and stop sign, make sightline improvements, provide in detail two off street parking spaces, including one handicap accessible van space and signage, delineate and label areas for outside storage for four small pickup trucks and one cubic yard material. As I said previously, all parking and storage areas will be paved with the two minutes concrete pavement, and striped. Site stabilization, anti-tracking during construction, stormwater retention will be required, drainage calculations, and a screening with a fence and some landscape. So that's basically what was drafted as an approval for this application.
And it also included five thousand dollar site restoration and stabilization.
And we have on this, Porter, O'Reilly, Lacy, Ambrose, and Condon, you're seated for So do we have a motion?
Move to accept the application of SEP two thousand eighteen dash oh one, file fifteen nine six eight, forty five Pepper Street, as drafted.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any, any further discussion or questions on this? Anyone? No one? Call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Porter, no.
Lacy, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Okay, next up. SEP two thousand fourteen dash fourteen dash eight three, file one five five zero eight, fifty Cambridge Drive, Axel Plastics, Industrial District Two. This was to install some exterior storage containers, including landscape screening around it, install three exterior overflow tanks, installing an exterior chain linked storage area measuring seventy four feet by eighteen feet for storing empty totes and pallets, adding eight new parking spaces in an area previously approved for deferred parking, relocating the dumpster enclosure, and relocation of twelve parking spaces, so they're relocating twelve and adding eight. And Ryan, you're all, you're seated for this one also. Any other notes, Will?
No, I think that, it's a, it did.
Was there an existing bond that covers it?
Existing bond, that's covered in this thing that, you're not changing that.
Okay. We have a motion?
Move to accept application SEP two thousand fourteen dash fourteen dash eight three, file fifteen fifty A, fifty Cambridge Drive, as drafted.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes. Lacy, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Next up, we closed Timothy Hill. As was stated in the public hearing, this is an application that was thoroughly reviewed at multiple public hearings prior, prior to being approved a couple of years ago. It has a current inland wetlands approval that's still valid. They're not proposing any changes to their original plan. They did agree to meet some of the requests of staff to add a few things to their list of things to do. So what does the commission think about this?
Well, we should probably move ahead with it, and you were here for the, for the whole.
I was here for three or four of them, yeah.
We were here for the last one, I didn't know if they, they didn't continue.
Didn't you want to remove sidewalks and stuff in here?
It's, that's.
Did the original plan have that?
No, he, the only place that has sidewalks is over the, the wetlands crossings. All the other sidewalks are, were waived as they worked throughout the entire project. There's no sidewalks in that subdivision.
Are there sidewalks in the park anywhere?
No.
I think we should approve it.
So I'll prepare a draft?
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out. Yes, you're gonna prepare a draft, what do we want that draft to say? You're not, you're not on this one, John is.
To address the staff comments that we went over.
Yep.
During the public hearing, that we're going to waive the street trees as well as the sidewalks.
All right, so is the general consensus that Will should draft an approval?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, Will, draft an approval on that. One sixty Charlton Road is coming back, ninety six and one point Barnhill Road is coming Am I overlooking anything?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on, Regulation Review Amendment Work Session. We met this evening for a little over an hour right before this meeting. We're almost through the text amendment that we've been working on for three years. We'll probably wrap up our subcommittee work at our next meeting, and then, once that's done, we'll move that on to the full commission for review. We also, this evening, looked, or met with a proposed applicant who wants electric vehicle charging stations. So we're, we're looking at possibly creating that as an approved use in certain zones in town, but that's, that's in its preliminary stages, so we're waiting for them to get back to us on that.
What are those, they go to gas stations or other parking?
Commercial parking lots. We're, we're thinking any, any business L O R or industrial zone. So that, that'll be coming up in the future. We have not set our next meeting yet, but we'll have to do that one of these days. Anything else from the subcommittee standpoint, Will?
No, doesn't.
All right, no correspondence. I have nothing new to report. Any, other commissioners have anything to report? All right, Will, up to you.
We started this discussion at the last meeting and on the P O C D, twenty twenty, R F P, draft R F P, and I'd like to continue that discussion, if you have any input or comments, and I'd like to get at some point to move this forward so we can get it into the processes of getting this actually put out there. But we have to get a draft, so we can go to, I assume we, we have to go to the first electman, we have to go, the town council has to, I don't know, we have to go to the first electman at least, get this.
Do you have any recommendations of who we're gonna hire for as well?
Well, well, that's the whole point of the R F P.
We have, we submit, we put out an R F P and see who's interested in doing it, and we solicit bids on it.
Okay.
But this is your opportunity to kind of focus that, and, you know, tell them what you want.
I'd like to have, I mean, two thousand, they put a, a table, an implementation timetable for all of their recommendations, and it was in a chart format, which I like better than the one in two thousand and ten, it was just listed a whole list of, of recommendations for what to, what to change. But I think we need to spend more time on that, not just the chart and not just the list, because if you look back, the recommendations from two thousand, if you look back to the previous one, from nineteen eighty eight, the recommendations are the same, eighty eight, two thousand, two thousand and ten, same recommendations, not a very few of them have been done. I would like to see a little more concentration on implementation of these recommendations, which are probably gonna be the same ones in the past thirty years. Maybe we could use some help on how to implement their recommendations. I mean, some of them have, have been implemented, but low impact development, and those by statute, they push us into doing it.
That's not for the R F Q, though.
What's that?
That's not for the R F Q, that's.
Well, we could put something in that.
Well, he asked to put something to, to tell them what we wanted them to want to.
Recommendations, maybe, the two R deadline.
We, we could have, we had something in here that requires the, the, you know, consultant to help better define the implementation to be more realistic and, and, you know.
Give us some more guidance on how to go out implementing some of these recommendations, rather than just making.
Recommend timeline, recommend timelines, you say?
Well, they do timelines, but.
A little more than a timeline, like how, how do you implement some of these, these proposed issues?
More guidance on that. I would like to put that right in the.
Okay, you know, we, in, in two thousand and ten, you know, we had a lot of discussion about village districts.
Right, and then it ended.
And several areas in town were, were selected as ideal candidates for village districts, but that was eight years ago, and, you know, we've never taken a second look at that. Now, that's partially our fault. That's what we're supposed to be doing, but.
Yeah, but I think if we have an agenda on how to go about doing that, it would be, because we don't have the time to do that, to make an agenda and then, and then follow, you know what I mean? If we had something laid out before us.
Maybe some recommendations on implementation.
Yeah.
I think that's good, to build on that for what you're saying. You say you don't have time.
Well, we can do it if it's laid out before us.
No, I just, yeah, I just wanna comment that you're the planning and zoning commission, but you do a lot of zoning, we don't do a lot of planning, so, you know, at some point, you get your P O C D, you have to dedicate some time to some of the things in the P O C D as your planning hats, and not with applicants, and, and figure some of that. And we are dealing with the regulations, I mean, that's zoning, but it's part of the planning process.
Our, our subcommittee is really a planning function.
That's what I'm saying, that's.
From a zoning perspective, but, but, and, right, you could take on the, the village districts with, with the subcommittee, but, so my, that's my point, is that you need to devote, as a commission and through committee, time throughout the year to some of those things, if you're gonna.
I think that should help us with that developing an agenda, on how to go forward and implement these recommendations.
And the other thing that you need to do when you're doing the P O C D is be very involved in defining realistic recommendations that you can implement.
Well, they're gonna recommend these to us.
No, they're gonna, well, yes and no. They're gonna try to drag out of you what it is you want, and they're gonna close the books, what the town wants, through your, through your oversight, and they're gonna put some clothes out there and give you some recommendations, but then, you know, you need to, you can't just take carte blanche, you have to, like, you have to kind of engage and, and, and want those things. Now, I wasn't here, so I don't know if the village district was well received or was just an idea, you know, if it was just an idea, that's why it never got done, so, you know, so, you know.
Pretty much. We pretty much well received that.
Right, but I, but I mean, you get those things, and then, and I know you get tired if you do a P O C D, but you gotta go back and start doing those things, and not everything in the P O C D is you, anyway. Some of it is the school, some of it's town board, some of it's other people, so, I mean.
It's a fair amount, that's us.
Yeah, so, I mean, you can have a, I've been involved where some plans come down the pipe, the consultant gives you a bunch of good ideas, but they're just the same ideas they're giving everywhere, they're not necessarily Town Monroe ideas. That doesn't do you much good, so. But I can do something with what you're saying here to, to frame that better, to make a more holistic implementation guidance document, more than just a schedule.
Now, do we add specific projects on that, or can we?
We will.
Had they had chalk hill on it in the past?
Well, it could, and that, if you look on page two and, two and three, you know, I was identifying some of those things, and, you know, for instance, the last bullet on page two, you know, evaluation of former Stevenson lower property and surrounding area to identify potential redevelopment opportunities. I mean, that's just a, a property that's kind of sitting there, has some opportunities. Obviously, the private sector hasn't done anything specifically, but I think part of this P O C D is we could take a harder look at, what are the opportunities and constraints of that property, and can we do something different than what the current zoning is that might be attractive? And can we do something different than what the current zoning is that might be attractive to somebody that hasn't come to us yet? So that's kind of.
Chalk hill's a good example.
Yeah, chalk hill's another example.
And what about, I know it's kind of a hot topic now, this performance pavilion, would that be something we could add on there? Or no, looking at how they would zone that eventually if they were to move forward.
Well, that's permitted, so.
Is it?
Well, the forest pavilion is a permitted use as a municipal use, what's unknown is what they're projecting for attendance.
Yeah, because then parking.
Yeah.
So we're reevaluating maybe the parks for parking.
The most parks, is that?
Yeah.
We're talking about things that we're going to be doing three years from now, hopefully that will get started in four to three years. Now, this isn't going to be published until two thousand and twenty, and by the time we.
Actually, it's only a year and a half.
Wipe over, working on it and want to go back to it again, it'll be another year.
I guess that's just my question, is that something worth trying to look at putting on there too, because I know it's.
Well, it's, yeah.
Something people are talking about, and also chickens, but.
Well, your, your P O C D, you don't necessarily want to put in your RFP the minutia. When you have the consultant and you start talking about things, you raise chickens as an issue and it comes, you know, you look at it, but, because I don't think it's that big of a. You know, that's a study, an evaluated study, you know.
We might get to the chickens before the P O C.
Yeah, I would hope so, just after the last meeting.
I mean, the chalk hill could be something you could stick back in here.
That's probably.
That's a big, yeah.
Do you want to put something in here?
I, I think that that would be worth having some outside.
Assistance.
Yeah.
Outside ideas looking at it. The, the big thing that, that I had in my mind, which I think you already addressed, is. What's, what's the future of our, of our commercial corridors, because it's not retail.
Yeah, exactly, that's, that's not the good thing.
Well, that's.
The ideas we have.
We do have.
We really need to look at that.
So I have evaluation of existing commercial zoning along Main Street and Monroe Turnpike corridors to identify opportunities for increased economic. Through appropriate commercial zoning expansions, zone consolidates and zone changes, now we can. I can beef that up to get something in about, you know, this transition in retail and, you know, the transition of land use, so I can add another sentence to make it a little bit more.
Well, when the third bullet down, you already have mixed use too, which is probably, you know, another.
Right.
Potential use for the commercial corridor in certain locations.
So those are good suggestions.
Apartment buildings and that?
Well, that's what mixed use.
Is that what mixed use is?
Yeah, mixed use typically is residential with commercial.
Do you, and I apologize, I haven't committed this to memory, I did read it. Do you talk about? Like how many public meetings we expect them to attend and things of that nature?
I don't think we said it specifically, I think we've asked them to outline that.
And I've only been involved in, in the two thousand and ten. But it, it seemed to me like. We had minimal involvement of a principal and an awful lot of work being done by. Underwriters.
Yeah, I mean, the, the RFP is emphasizing, if you look at the. The, the page four. That they identify specific personnel to be assigned in their related experience, it requires that the lead project manager be certified planner A I C P. Then you go into the backgrounds, you know, you want to know, so I mean, it's sort of, you have to vet that through the interview process and get some understanding of who it is. And I, I can tell you that I get it, that is important, I was. I don't know, ten, twelve years ago, I, I interviewed for this kind of work for the town and that was their same question. I was not going to do the work, I was just doing the, getting the job, and they said they wouldn't hire us unless I did the work. So we ended up revamping our proposals so that. We could accommodate the cost and whatever, so that you kind of got to get through the interview process, I mean, we're emphasizing we want. People who know what they're doing to be the, the main people, so that's going to be key when we get to the interviews, I think.
Alright, well, I think basically. Unless someone has any other issues to bring up, I think this is basically a pretty comprehensive RFQ, RFP. So if you make those few minor tweaks.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll make those tweaks, I'll recirculate it digitally, and if anyone has any further comments, just email me. And then with you, Bill, we'll, we'll take the next step.
And get this moving along.
Yeah.
So if you do have any questions or comments, try to be timely in your, in your response. Anything else? No. Anyone, Scott?
Nope.
Nobody? We are a guard, nine seven.